...fiscal year budget. The Budget Committee has been working on this with Ross Hansen and Larry Soderberg. And Zach has been helping us out, we appreciate that. Jim has been at all the budget meetings and I've been there. And we've come up with this year's budget and hopefully it will work for us. It's kind of a roadmap that we follow. We don't have to spend the money that's in there, but it gives us some idea right now of where we're going. And there will be things that come up that are not in the budget that we will have to pay for surprises. This is our roadmap. So tonight we'd like to start with the roll call. Larry?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Val?
Here.
And Scott?
Here.
And the notice, the new illegal notice of the public hearing has been posted to know somebody in Wakefield Republican. The open meeting laws are available if anyone wants to look at them, they're usually...
In Mason's office.
To the left or to the back?
Is your office open?
They're on site. They're on site. Kyle, can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
But we do have the open meeting laws here someplace, we're gonna skip those momentarily. The first thing we do is to open the public hearing on the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget. And there are copies available, I think either one of the council, the copy of other interested people have copies available, Zach?
There should be a few back there.
There are still, there's some there. And so we've officially opened the budget hearing.
And open the second one too.
Oh, the second one on the list. And then we also open the public hearing to set the final tax request, which is a bit lower than last year, which is a good thing. Are there any comments from anyone that's attended the meeting tonight, either in the audience or among other council or city staff? Kyle, do you have some things to say about our budget?
Yeah, just, you know, a couple, just kind of brief overview for everyone. You know, there's been some recommendations we haven't passed, and I think we've implemented a lot of them going forward. Your property tax asking is actually going to be decreasing this year, however, the levy is not changing at all. You guys actually had a valuation decrease of about $160,000 on your property tax. So, you know, whatever that may be, probably some bad, you know, maybe overvaluation in prior years, houses that are no longer maybe habitable, some, you know, somewhere in that regard. So, pretty much straight across the board, no growth, growth offset, you know, any decreases there. So that's where your property tax asking is going. You know, for next fiscal year's budget, you know, we always talk about a balanced general fund budget. Where we're standing right now, it looks like we're potentially going to end up with about $60,000 surplus in the general fund. With that being said, you know, roughly we would have about 11 months cash reserve on hand, so we're in really good shape there. We've always been in really good shape in the general fund, so that's good there. The one big item that, you know, when you look at everything, we are budgeting transfers of $800,000 from the electric fund to the water fund to assist with that project. Even when that's all said and done, potentially, you know, water and sewer are going to be fairly light, for lack of a better term, on cash at the end of everything, so there's not going to be a whole lot going on there, you know, we've talked about it, you know, we kinda gotta watch those rates. You know, electric does have the cash. We will be spending down, you know, where we're projecting electric cash to end at September 30th of 2022, you know, a lot of assumptions, a lot of budgeting going through there, will be about $770,000. For instance, at 9:30 of 2020, electric's cash balance is $1.8 million. Obviously, the rate issue that we had in February took a big chunk, you know, a good chunk out of that, and then the other chunk's going to be more water. So, you know, just something to monitor, you know, nothing too crazy there. Otherwise, everything else is pretty, fairly similar. You know, your guys' budget for fiscal year 2022 is actually going to end up being 1% less, or about $90,000 less than it was the prior year. And once again, that includes the nursing home, but overall, nothing too big. And then the last thing that, you know, I just wanted to point out, because we've talked about it a lot, you guys implemented the franchise fee, which helped out immensely. In the budget form that you guys have in front of you, it's on page eight, it says lit supporting schedule. This is that restricted funds authority calculation that we talked about, that has your property tax, your sales tax, your highway allocation, municipal legalization going through there. And we usually have transfer surplus fees, because that's how we were making the general fund balance, we're transferring dollars from electric to the general fund. Well, now we're doing the franchise fee. That circumvents, for lack of a better term, this calculation. So we have these calculations in here, you can see we have some exclusions for the interlocal, for the police. And then if you flip to page nine, you can see that that leaves us about $760,000 is what our number is. Our restricted funds authority, and the one thing that you'll wanna make sure you vote on tonight, if you haven't done it already, is doing that 1% increase in the restricted funds. You guys are limited to 2.5% automatic every year. Council can vote with majority to increase that additional percent. All this is really doing, it's not saying we're gonna spend the money, it's just allowing you guys to utilize property tax, sales tax, in the most economical, feasible fashion for the city without, you know, spending frivolously effectively. So, that's going to end up being $763,000. So you can see, we're only going to have about $3,000 of unused restricted funds for you. You know, in the past, we have been transferring, you know, somewhere between, it averaged out to about $400,000 a year from electric to general fund. Well, you can see here, had we had that $300,000, if it was just purely going for operations, we would've had to lower our property tax asking by $300,000, which is pretty much 100% of our property tax asking. So, that franchise fee alleviated a lot of the issues that we had going on in this restricted funds calculation. It doesn't mean that potentially, you know, if tax or anything comes on the ballot again, we should probably strongly consider increasing restricted funds authority to buy that amount. I know we voted on sales tax last November, so a little later, maybe it's 2 November, so I don't remember exactly. But, you know, one of those two things which could help us just to alleviate any burden that does happen, you know, robust growth in the community or something like that, sales tax shoots up, and we'll start running into issues again in the restricted funds calculation. But, overall, we're in good shape, we don't have any issues this year that franchise fee alleviated pretty much all of our issues going through there. So, thanks to you guys for passing that and opening that up. But, outside of that, that's all I really have for our comments. I don't know if there's any questions, more than we could have tried to answer.
Any questions, council?
So Kyle, I think we talked about this in the past, but is it your recommendation that we look at continuing to maybe mark up sewer and water in the coming year or two weeks?
I think it's going to be strongly, need to be considered. What rate we go up, you know, is kind of up to council there. But as I've seen, you know, we've kind of seen in the past, they're not quite sewer especially, it's not really, the revenue we're bringing in is barely covering the expenses that we have going out. You know, we're going to slowly correct that deficit that we had there. However, with that being said, the next...
We lost the audio, Kyle.
We lost the audio, Kyle. We can't hear you.
I can hear you. Now we're back.
Yep. So, I guess eventually instead of a huge capital project coming up and us having to have 15 or 20% increase, because unfortunately, I've seen cities have to do that, you could potentially be going up 2%, 3% a year, something that, you know, helps correct that amount, but at the same time, it's not putting a huge burden on the taxpayers there in that regard. And with that being said, you know, typically, your large watering sewer consumers are commercial properties versus, you know, residential properties. So, it does kind of distribute that out, potentially a little bit more there. But, I think, you know, for sure, the water and sewer needs to be monitored closely. You know, we've been saying sewer's for sure probably low, water needs to be watched, with that water project going on, is potentially going to be need to watch even more when it comes down to that.
Any other questions, Kyle? Thanks for your help, Kyle, and thanks for leading the way on the franchise fee, you gave us some good advice, and appreciate the work that Jim and Zach have done with you and then the finance committee also, the work of the people who run the finance committee. So, thanks to you and thanks to everybody that was involved in the process, and we look forward to working with you down the road. And Zach is handing off the baton to Pam, so she'll be the person working with you pretty closely, so thanks a lot, Kyle.
Perfect, sounds good, thank you guys, have a good night.
Are there any other questions about the budget? If not, we can close the public hearing on, we need a motion to close the public hearing on the 2021 fiscal year budget, 2021-22 fiscal year budget. That's been separately imagined.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ross?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And then we also need a motion to close the budget to set the final tax request.
Second.
Thank you. And Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Ross?
Aye.
Then we need one more motion, I guess we need two more motions, and we need to adopt the proposed budget statement. Do we have to read that?
No.
Everyone's got this, you've had this, so it shows our budget amounts. Shows our operating budget in 2021 was, yeah, it's all, it's all the credit, all the information.
So you're recommending by adoption, that you're recommending that the next meeting the city approve the budget with these amounts for...
Right, the official budget approval is on, is in the October meeting?
This is the reg, no, it's in this, it's the next meeting.
Oh, the next meeting, yes. Okay.
So this, you're recommending the city council that they adopt this budget.
So we need a motion.
Make a motion to read out the proposed budget for the year 2022.
Second. All right. Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Then we need one final motion as for adjournment of this public hearing on the fiscal year budget.
Second.
And Larry?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, we have to do the roll call for the, so the council work session begins at 5:00, but we've already been through that, and it's the roll call to start the council meeting. Larry?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Val?
Here.
Scott, here. No one left. Again, we've posted the new illegal notices of public hearing and also appeared to wake the Republican, the most recent edition. We've got the consent agenda, which approves the list of things that are all in item one. If you would like to ask to exclude one of those, you may do so when you make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have open meeting laws.
Oh, we do have, thanks, Lee, they're off to the left, open meeting laws, thank you. Good luck, Jim. Thanks, Jim.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
You have a motion in the second?
I have a correction on minutes.
Sure.
On the August 11th minutes, the regular council meeting one, when we put the end of the minutes, it talks about the executive session to negotiate terms of property purchase. I voted no. What did that state, and then here it says aye. And then we had a reading, we didn't vote a few...
I even asked you about that.
Yeah, you did. Uh-huh. I thought...
Val, you voted no on what, I'm sorry?
Um, to going to executive session.
No.
That's my only correction.
So then you're okay with the consent agenda, but...
With that correction.
Need a motion to change that?
We need to pull that off the consent agenda and have a second vote on the correction on that.
Okay. And what date was the...
It's on...
It just deals with the executive session?
So item one B on the, there, just take that off, one B, so the consent agenda would be one A, one C.
Okay. The consent agenda is for all those listed except for one B.
So we need a motion.
Where do we pray the...
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda for everything except for one B. Second.
A motion to second, Ross?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Val?
Aye.
And then we need to go to the minutes and Val needs to make a motion, correct? And the minutes that you stated. And then Val, on the second, top of the second page of the...
Bottom of the second page?
Top of the second, I'm talking about different...
Oh, okay.
It's redundant, it's a repeated question.
Oh.
Which is council member Larry Soderberg who filed a passage in page 1021. If you go to the first page, it's already stated.
I should've kept it out, I don't stand, sorry, here goes. So it's, it's...
If you, the bottom of the first page says third reading, you can find the passage. And it says council member Larry Soderberg who filed a passage and stated sales tax. And you go to the next page, to the top, so it's council member Larry Soderberg who can find the passage, it's just redundant, it's twice in there, so you strike that.
Okay.
And then change your vote and then like...
Okay.
We'll send you the motion to make those changes.
So moved. Is that what we're talking about?
No, I see the first one, but I'll see the second one.
Okay, redundancy, right, you have that, the second one, it's the last paragraph, almost second to last, it says executive session to negotiate...
I got yours, it's Larry's on the order list.
See this, I see that?
The top of the second page, the one I have.
Oh, okay. Okay. We have a motion to begin, we decide and then...
Okay, we got the, who made the motion, was it Val? And we need a second, Scott, we need a second, all right, Larry?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
And Scott, thank you, Val.
Sorry.
The second is, again, authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal cooperation agreement with Dakota County MFO. And Jimmy, want to explain that, you'd like to hear it.
Yeah, that's an ongoing agreement that we had with those guys, in an interlocal agreement, just agreeing to be part of the group, I think we had that in the packet, all the member committees that are in there, the MFO then receives funding from the state that is distributed to fire rescue units or communities around in that MFO area. I'm not too sure how many are, MFOs are out there, areas northeast of Bracca, and I think they just go around in clusters like that, so we've been getting MFO funds for quite a few years, and the state legislature adopted new legislation last year, we should see an additional $10,000 going into that fund from the legislature, so what we're getting plus another $10,000 is a part of it, so...
And as you explained, it benefits our...
And then Mike Palmer, who's been a delegate, we have to have a delegate from Allen and Waterbury and all those communities, so Mike is, as number one, he's helped them with their county, and number two, he's been a delegate, so he keeps us in a loop as well.
So that's good, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, you had a motion to pass this?
Introduce it.
All we gotta do is just a resolution. If I got to read a resolution, where is it? I have a... A resolution authorizes execution of the interlocal agreement for the formation of and membership of Dakota County Mutual Finance Organization, whereas the city of Wakefield desires to enter an interlocal agreement pursuant to the Interlocal Cooperation Act, Nebraska statute 15801, forming the Dakota County Mutual Finance Organization, the MFO. And that?
I make a motion, we...
Ready to introduce it?
Larry can do it. It's introduced in the... I make a motion, we introduce resolution 2012-2021, for the mayor to sign an agreement that Dakota County MFO is going to pass.
Okay, Ross? Val?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
And Larry?
Aye.
That's all we need. Thanks, Larry. Thanks, council. Next one's a, so I'm thinking, we get to approve the application for membership of Wakefield Fire Rescue, Andres Spess Quest, and that's a video, I don't know if anybody's here.
No.
You know it, not yet. Larry, do you know anything about it? No? So the fire department has asked us to approve the application for Andres Spess Quest, so we need a motion to do that.
Second.
Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Ross?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Okay, open public hearing for community development block grant, downtown revitalization grant, and did we have the wrong number, was that this one or was that...
Yeah, Andrew's. Andrew is here though.
Oh.
Explain what's going on.
Okay. Welcome.
Andrea Larson, with Northeast Economic Development District. So I have some good news on these grant numbers. Initially, when I calculated out the funds of the match, I took 25% of the project total is what we had for match, and that came up to $100,000. Now, going back over the numbers, which we always do before we input them into the grant application, I realized my mistake, where I should've taken 25% of the grant funds. And so that's quite a bit less, and I'll just read this whole paragraph to you here. The city of Wakefield is requesting $382,760 of CD2B downtown revitalization funds, of which $347,760 or 80% of the total project costs will be used for infrastructure lighting improvements in the downtown area, and will include the installation of 32 light poles, pull boxes, wire, board conduits, and concrete replacement on Main Street from First Street to Fifth Street, not Fourth, as was published. $25,000 of, $25,000 will be used for general administration, and $10,000 will be used for construction management. The total project costs are estimated at $434,700, with the Wakefield Community Redevelopment Authority providing $86,940 in matching funds. That is 20% of the total project costs, or 25% of the grant funds. So that's the main correction, is we've gone from $100,000 to $86,940. All CD2B funds will primarily benefit limited clientele persons in the community by the removal of architectural barriers. No persons, farms, or businesses will be displaced as a result of this project. Otherwise, everything else is exactly the same as the last time I was here. We just wanted to get it on record, that correction of mainly what we're asking for match from the CERA.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Yes.
You know, I was looking at one in August.
Yes.
Here, we are talking about include sidewalk, curb, and gutter replacement. This is in August.
Great.
Now, this one in September, it don't say anything about sidewalks or curb.
That's actually in the resolution, the actual resolution mentions that. 32 light poles, pull boxes, and concrete replacement, that kind of encompasses the sidewalk, curb, and gutters, just less mortgage.
Okay, so that concrete replacement, we have all covered, that sidewalk and gutter?
Yes, yeah, and that's all spelled out in the actual grant application, all the work that will be completed.
Okay.
Thanks for being on. Works out well, I didn't hear nobody would complain to you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So council, you know, you did a good thing, approved.
Do we have any other comments from the audience or from this council?
If not, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on CD2B downtown revitalization grant.
Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Ross?
Aye.
And Val?
Aye.
And Scott, thank you, Val.
Sorry.
The second is, again, authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal cooperation agreement with Dakota County MFO. And Jimmy, want to explain that, you'd like to hear it.
Yeah, that's an ongoing agreement that we had with those guys, in an interlocal agreement, just agreeing to be part of the group, I think we had that in the packet, all the member committees that are in there, the MFO then receives funding from the state that is distributed to fire rescue units or communities around in that MFO area. I'm not too sure how many are, MFOs are out there, areas northeast of Bracca, and I think they just go around in clusters like that, so we've been getting MFO funds for quite a few years, and the state legislature adopted new legislation last year, we should see an additional $10,000 going into that fund from the legislature, so what we're getting plus another $10,000 is a part of it, so...
And as you explained, it benefits our...
And then Mike Palmer, who's been a delegate, we have to have a delegate from Allen and Waterbury and all those communities, so Mike is, as number one, he's helped them with their county, and number two, he's been a delegate, so he keeps us in a loop as well.
So that's good, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, you had a motion to pass this?
Introduce it.
All we gotta do is just a resolution. If I got to read a resolution, where is it? A resolution authorizes execution of the interlocal agreement for the formation of and membership of Dakota County Mutual Finance Organization, whereas the city of Wakefield desires to enter an interlocal agreement pursuant to the Interlocal Cooperation Act, Nebraska statute 15801, forming the Dakota County Mutual Finance Organization, the MFO. And that?
I make a motion, we...
Ready to introduce it?
Larry can do it.
The way it is now, he's afraid if we don't do anything, that we're not going to pass in March. And I think Jim feels the same way. Uh, Jim was going to drop an electric line, maybe we have to electricity for, for those.
We're going to put some electric motors out there.
You won't have to do this?
We shouldn't have to do that.
Okay. And, and then Jim, and I think some people, the budget committee look at it, there's enough money in this year's budget, remaining in the budget year in sewer, is that right? That we, we can take out of this year's budget, so that's what we're voting on, if you want to do that. And it seems like a lot of money, but if you compare it to this, four or five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand, it's probably the right thing to do. And I, I think we need to, you know, Paul and Mike both thought it would be a solution that would work for us, so. That's what it is.
Can you add a question?
Why, why six, and what's the life expectancy of these, and what do they, are we going to use them?
Let's, let's put them in the lagoons, they're going to stay there, Larry, um, I'm assuming. But I don't have any idea what the life expectancy is, but.
The, the number is reached by the total, the size of the lagoon.
Yeah.
Uh, the perimeter, then also the depth. But right now, where the main sewer line, uh, the, the, uh, pumping station, the lift station where it comes into the lagoon, it's just like you make it a lo- an island there, that water's not moving. And we've got to get the water moving, and I think that this will solve the problem, I don't know, but, you know.
So six of them is based on the size of the?
Yes.
Correct, yeah, size of the lagoon.
And they're built in Pierce, and we can save, what is it, thirty dollars a piece? We send them up our.
Thirty dollars a piece if they go pick them up, so.
Would you recommend doing that or not?
Oh, yeah, I think that's manageable.
The company's in Creighton, Nebraska, Hidden River Systems Incorporated, but they bank these in Pierce. So that's what we need to decide, do we want to do that or not?
Eventually, Jim, we were talking about sometime down the road that, uh, pond might have to be cleaned out, right?
That's the fault, the number Paul was talking about, that half a million dollar mark. Regaining.
Clean the pond out down the road.
Mine might not, for, this I think should align for a good period of time.
But you're right, Larry, you could put this amount of money into it and, and maybe it won't do the job, and then you would have to go to a more expensive alternative, but.
I think we gotta probably try something. How long is this problem, making it melt up, it's, it's, uh?
That lagoon's been in production for years, but I'm not for sure when that's been actually built. I would say back in the sixties, so it's, it's held up well, so.
What we're, we're meeting the problem now is our.
It's a, it's the amount of, among you you can discharge.
Yeah.
If we get above thirty, we can't discharge from that, right?
Yeah.
So then you're going to overflow that, or you're going to, I mean, you're going to have to take some drastic action pretty quick after this doesn't do the job. And it could impact next year's budget if this doesn't work, because we, we can't let the lagoon overflow it, right? Be in trouble.
Nope, you do not want to do that.
So if we approve, they'll get them yet this fall and get them installed as soon as possible?
Guys should be able to, to do that. Get it, get them, uh, get them paid for, and then the guys can go get them and, um, bring them and get them put in.
If, if you see Paul, he would take you out there and explain everything to you. And you can see the lagoon, where they, where the jet, but once the water is treated, then the water goes to another one for further treatment. It's finally discharged back in the lagoon, so. How many, do we have, actually, five or six?
Six cells.
Six cells. And the cells are bigger than this room, right?
Mostly.
Near the, near the size of this room, I suppose, but how, what's the depth?
Uh, five, six foot.
And that's about all the information I can get, I didn't.
I'll make a motion to purchase the lagoon revitalization lagoon at the price of four nine thousand seven hundred, or four nine thousand four hundred and seventy-one.
Yeah. Sure.
Second.
And just for the point of order, we would have to pay for that in this year's budget, right? We'd have to pay for it, uh, was it September or October? September.
In September, yeah, we need to get, uh, an invoice, so we can get it out of this budget. I did put it into new budget, but as you can see, that budget is very strained. And so if we can lessen that, uh, amount, we'll be much better off.
Okay, is there no other questions we'd ask for both, or? And we, we made a motion, right? Had a second. Larry?
Hi.
Ross. No.
Hi.
And Scott.
Hi.
Thank you. And the next one is, we have a lot of public hearings today.
Yep.
Open public hearing to amend zoning regulations to allow funeral chapel as a permitted use in C three. And have a Larry talk through this, we just need to second, yeah, second half and second vote?
Or the third vote?
No, this, this is first.
I thought we did, uh, we already talked about that funeral chapel, I thought.
We did, I, I, if I, if you don't mind, I'll just kind of speak to this.
Yeah, appreciate your clip.
Okay. So, um, we have a pending, uh, purchase agreement from Underlow to buy a lot out there in the industrial tract across the street here to put a funeral chapel up. And, um, the, the, uh, covenants and restrictions that we, we signed, the college generals that got there, made a little ambiguous once again about whether funeral chapel could be allowed. And so, um, uh, first of all, we needed to do a way, we needed to provide for that in the covenants and restrictions. So we asked everybody to sign an amendment to that to allow funeral chapel to be built there. It doesn't do any, um, it does, it no aggravation and no body perpussion at all, just a meeting place. And so you guys authorized the mayor to sign an amendment to that covenants and restrictions. Everybody else that owns property out there, sign off, except the car wash guy. He promised me at the end of June, he happened to meet by the end of the week, on June twenty-second. And I email him, call him, whatever, two or three times a week. Can't get the guy to move off and win this after the first, the first amendment, too, so. He said he'd do it, I'm just waiting for him to finally do it. So this had to go to the planning commission, because we also needed a rezoning to allow funeral chapels in C three, um, this, this, uh, highway business districts. And, uh, um, the planning commission had a hearing on this, and, uh, they recommended that you make that zoning amendment. So, um, number ten is to consider that amendment and, and on your agenda, and it should be, uh, or it's ten dash twenty twenty-one, we overlooked, and we already had it, number nine, so. If you have any questions, I'll be having answered, but that's kind of history of what we're going with this. As soon as, um, we get that zoning change made, as soon, and then, um, and as soon as we get Mr. D C from the Car Rush Company to sign off on the covenants and restrictions amendment, then, um, they can go forward with their other, their application for tip on this project. He's Dan D C, G D S Y.
So can't move forward, uh, will you send it up either, huh?
He will, it's just a matter of, probably, he had, the last time, I started emailing his office every day, and then got sick of hearing from me, so we finally signed it. And that's what it's not, it's just nagging and nagging the secret. The first amendment, I made a special trip to South Sioux City to get his signature, so I can underwrite it in Nebraska, because his office is in, I mean, I can't underwrite documents there, and the guy stood me up. I mean, he didn't, he didn't, not only did he not come, he didn't even call me to tell me he wasn't coming. So, and that's, you know, it's just a matter of trying to find a way to get him down, maybe nag his office off until he gets sick and tired of hearing. He said he'd sign it, I don't have no, I have no doubt that he will, he just won't take the time to do it. So.
So, so are we kind of, the, the, before the horse?
No, I'm, no, he will do it, he will do it, we've got to get this done, too, you know? I don't, I don't think we need to hold up anything else on this project, waiting for him, uh, because it will happen. It's just a matter of.
This is the, this audience is introduced, this is the first reading, so. If you're going to do your three readings or two, and then an interim.
So, yeah, it, it's, it's not a matter of it not happening, because again, it's just a matter of when he gets on.
Who, who bears the cost of your doing all the work on this to get his signature and to get everything done? Does that get split between the buyer and the seller, or how does that work?
Well, not, not to my knowledge, I just, I'm still a city, because it's city business, so keep working on it. Maybe I should approach him with that angle, that city doesn't want to pay any more contract with him, and maybe we should turn off his water, or. Well, definitely.
What was it, what's it, what? So Londoners have made a down payment on that lot, and what's the total cost of the lot?
I don't recall that, I think it's, um, is it, it's not twenty thousand, is it?
It's less than twenty, but.
Yeah, they have, yeah.
And the purchase agreement was already made at that price?
And that's what, that's what was offered for, so that's what they.
It just seemed like, yeah, we're fair, we could split it with him, and then he'd pay part of the charge, because he knew that we were going to have to give a lot of.
Yeah, there was a lot.
Do a lot of work, I mean, so. I would sure ask if he would, I mean, share the cost with us.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind.
Talking about D C or London?
Both.
Yeah, I have.
No, I, I just think, I mean, he's getting kind, I mean, the, the lots are pretty reasonable, and the ones that we're selling for homes are very reasonable, so. If he could, I think he probably would see the, uh, but, I mean, the, the things you have to do, and explain a bit. That's, that's not part of tonight's discussion, so let's go ahead and, uh, make this decision.
Somebody should introduce.
Yeah. Introduce ordinance ten twenty.
Okay, closing.
Well, we are a public hearing, right? So if there's no other comments, can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So, move.
Larry?
Hi.
Ross?
Hi.
Scott? Thank you. And now, we're over to. Oh, yeah, introduce.
Somebody needs to introduce.
I could be a game.
Not until somebody introduces.
Cause somebody introduced ordinance ten twenty, twenty oh one.
It's twenty twenty.
Ten twenty twenty-one.
It's a mistake?
Yeah.
I think we'll have to get the minutes back, you know, the, 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 that'll have to be checked, you know, that's good. Check invoice is my thing, too.
Second.
Thanks, Val. Scott, or, uh, Ross?
I don't need to vote.
Oh, just introduce. An ordinance of the city of Wakefield, Nebraska, to amend zoning regulations to allow funeral chapels used for the purpose of holding funeral services and funeral gatherings, but not for the purpose of cremation or embalming, as permitted principal use and structure in the C three commercial highway districts within the zoning jurisdiction of the city of Wakefield, Nebraska. Repealing all ordinance is in conflict therewith and providing an effective date. That's what we need to do.
So then we're done unless somebody wants to move to wave.
I, I think you should wait for this, please, the second reading, and then if you want to wave the third reading, you can. That's kind of what we've been doing. All right, now we can go on to the eleven. And number eleven is, uh, involves the clerk treasurer position. And, uh, first of all, I want to thank Zach for all the hours that he's put in, and do, did a great job for the city of Wakefield. And, and, uh, we, we really already, as soon as he took under employment, we missed him. And, uh, but we interviewed, uh, three candidates, and the interviews were really, uh, enjoyable. And Larry was there as the council president, and Val was at, you were at all of them, Larry missed one of them. And then Jim was at all of them, and we're out. But we enjoyed talking to those people, and I think we had three really nice people and, and good applicants for the position. But, uh, tonight I'd like to, uh, get you to approve the appointment selection of Pam Vanderbein as our new city clerk treasurer.
I make a motion that we have hired Pam Vanderbein as our city clerk treasurer.
Second.
Ross?
Hi.
Val?
Hi.
Scott?
Larry?
Hi.
Uh, welcome aboard, and congratulations, Pam, we're glad to hear.
Thank you.
Next thing is, we had a accident at the library where a car hit the, uh, west side of the library. We've had a lot of that in the last decade or so, but, uh, did conserve about a day. And I think Jim can give you the full report.
Uh, I can't, but I don't have an estimate to tell you, we've been, I went over, we had a insurance adjuster out, and he came through, uh, last week. And I was hoping to have an actual estimate to share with you, but we don't have that yet. Uh, it's just taking some time to get that done, so. Elizabeth will be calling, uh, and getting some estimates from the contractors, and seeing what those numbers are. First is the, uh, estimate from our insurance adjuster. Any way we look at it, we've got to get the thing fixed and keep moving on before it gets too cold and, and, uh, hampers, uh, the activity there, so. As soon as I get that estimate from our insurance people, we will, we will pass it on to you. But it's, uh, I'm going to guess it's, you know, on that, uh, fifty thousand dollar range, by the time we get bricks, windows, and all the labor clean enough, so. Just guessing, so.
So, uh, twenty-five thousand has to come from the budget, if that's accurate, is that, or we have to?
From the insurance.
Oh, the insurance is paid for.
Right.
So what cost, will be impacted by that at all?
I do not think so at this time, so.
Got any questions, or Jim, or Max? When people start talking about safety ballers, it might be time to think about it around some of our, I know when we did the project at the park, the one, two things we haven't done yet, one of them is to put padding on the rings of the dugout, and another one is to put the safety ballers along the park road and, and in, by the buildings. And the one I really worry about is the press box, because if you come down that hill, and you could, you could really do some damage there with that, but, yeah, we might, might need ballers. I think, what building we had run into, the post office and?
Theater was running twice.
Yeah, the post.
Oh, the theater was running.
Post office, yarders, little shop.
The old drugstore.
Paulson's.
Yeah, Kenny Paulson's has been running, too.
We might need a sponsor, a citywide driver training course. Thanks a lot, Jim, for that work, and mayors public comment period. Anyone that has anything they'd like to talk about or questions, I'm sure can ask questions now.
Why isn't the drivers in trucks paid? Just curious, I don't know.
What's that?
Why isn't the drivers in trucks paid?
He has limited amount.
He has a limited liability, twenty-five thousand, what we're hearing. Uh, one of the makes, and I just mentioned it to Lee and Free, so I said, uh, let's say that the, the cost was fifty thousand, and, uh, we have to pay that difference, so. You know, I would always think, just, uh, that you could file a suit, civil suit, against him for the collection of those dollars, if that comes to it, so. I don't know, that's, that's a possibility, you guys can think about that, especially if that number goes higher than fifty thousand, it's, it would, the rest of it, what, uh, Mr. Barry said would come from our insurance, uh, so we'll see how that, uh, works out.
Any other, uh, comments?
I mean, no matter what, all you can get out of him is the twenty-five thousand.
Probably.
For, uh, his insurance company.
Yeah.
You might, and you end up suing him individually, you have to pay the difference, you have to collect.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, um. Utility informant report, Mike is.
Mike, uh, I had to go to the dentist, he had a busted tooth, and his collar really was bad, so he said he would probably go home after he got, um, beat up a little bit by the dentist, so.
Do you, did you get anything at all for?
This report is in Sarma.
Yeah.
It's on spark?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, been working on trees. Uh, Johnson Service, that's the people who'll be sewer getting cleaning sewer lines and making sure that they're in good shape. Uh, Zeissler Construction, we got a couple of fire hydrants in a water valve to replace. And then Val had a lagoon that's broke. And then he's talking about they are still doing GPS mapping for the water system, locating valves, hydrants and all those things and getting them GPS located. It's really tough. We got eight, ten inches of snow on the ground and and ice covered valves to go out there and find a a valve when you got a water leak and we should be able to pinpoint those things with the GPS to speed that process up a little bit.
He's been working on that. Is, did he, GPS the football field, so when he marks it, he can just use GPS?
I think they did the corners.
Okay.
So they could find them really quick, so.
Hey, I got a couple of things for Moby. You need to give him out of the sidewalks, not down here in Pacific Center yet. Talked about that all summer. Uh, how are we coming out of swimming pool? That's closed, is everything covered out?
Believe the canvas, uh sunscreen.
No, it hasn't winterized it yet.
Sunscreens are still in for shade, shade screens are still.
Get that done and uh uh some potholes, Second Street. I've had residents ask me if they can do something on Second Street. It's pretty deep up. Also, a few customer presidents that have their uh driveway, back out of your driveway, uh thing is broke up, Val, we've talked about that. We probably need to get the city a list so they can get it done before winter comes.
Turned one in earlier this year.
Thank you.
I still have it, so.
Okay, so we need to get that done, Jim?
Right.
Could we, could we put that on the year list, like from the street valleys on the agenda next month? So we be sure we can discuss that and take some action on it? The one on the highway on Main Street where all the
Yeah.
school traffic bill is just really rough, I hate it.
I talked to the Center of Nebraska, that's their responsibility. They're supposed to come in and overlay that. I asked them to uh you know, just not throw a patch in there, but I asked them to overlay that and give us a better apron because there is a about a four or five inch drop from asphalt to uh concrete there, so I asked Dick to bring that in about four or five foot and just make a nice little paper there, so. Uh, he said it's on his list to do it, so.
Nick Soden said that?
Nick Soden.
He's, he's usually pretty good with his word, but he doesn't, he's not.
I said he spreads thin because he can't keep people hired and uh I think that's every problem, so.
The other guy's gonna ask like the, it seemed like the speed control sign out there on the.
North end, with the north end, he he needs to take that and and maybe he has and I I don't know the answer, but uh, we can't, we can't get it to work and I just said, take it down, turn it in and let the company either fix it or replace it because it's just not, it's just not working.
Okay.
Uh, Jim Erickson said that when he's trimming up trees, he appreciates the city cleaning them up. He said it's saving him money and saving the city money. He goes up in the bucket and drops them and the city comes by and cleans them up, so he's saying that. Saving him money and the city, so that's good. How how does on-call staff work? When, on the weekend, Jim, how does that work?
They take, they take the three of them, Mark, uh Don, Mike and Paul, um, take the weekend, they go to the gallon, they just write down their name and they take it for a full week, which includes a weekend, so. Everybody gets up. You take three and uh fifty-two weeks, there's quite a few times being on call, so.
So I have a problem, what number do we call on the weekend if you have a problem? Do you call the city?
You can call the city one, which goes to MPBD call center and then they call out to uh the on-call phone.
So they kick it out after you call two-eight-seven-twenty-eight?
Correct.
Okay. And then do those people have to stay in town then or what's their response for a call?
Within a reasonable amount of time to be, you know, they all know that, that that week when they're on call that they have to be relatively available.
So it's more or less a reasonable amount of time?
Correct.
So they don't have to stay in the city limits?
Well, they usually try to, need to run the wind or something, you know, it's it's uh, they take the risk of 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 knowing that, so.
I guess if that's a place where people have called and there's no, there's no answers, is that what you heard, Larry?
Well, they've had an answer, but it's just getting slow response.
Slow, like how long?
When you say it's slow, they.
Well, I guess it depends on the situation, if it's a branch down in the street or is it a power outage or a water leak?
Yeah, that could carry them a lot. They, I just wondered if they could get a better understanding of that.
And and they're paying then extra for being on call?
They get seventy dollars for being the on-call person that weekend at least. And uh, I know with the budget, they kind of want us to look at raising that and we decided not to. And then they also get time and a half per hour that they've worked with him.
They get called out and have to do that?
Right.
Are are there any teeth on our end of this process?
Yeah, I think the best thing we can do is keep those thoughts and write everything out and then we can talk about it next month. Uh, cause Mike, I'm sure Mike will be here next month. Make, we try to make sure if you can make it and uh so, yeah, there's there's a lot of things, you know, to talk about, that's good, but I think in fairness, it's a life we should have him be here and and maybe he can answer some of our questions. So anyways, if there's no other questions for.
I have one more question. We heard it started, but we heard you take back from the water sample later on, Cubby's.
On the wells, what they drilled?
Yeah.
No, I know they, I know they, I was there when they uh drilled all of them and they told me that they were gonna come back the following week and take samples. I asked to be informed or know what's going on there, but there is, there is a contamination hole over there on that side of the highway in Cubby's area, but he said it's contained. Uh, that's why we put the wells over on our area uh that they can come in, sample them and let us know if that water or that containment is is moving, so. I would touch base with those guys again and say, hey, what do you know for? Let me know.
And that's because Cubby said it leaked?
What I understand is it wasn't necessarily Cubby's, but prior to that, there had been some leaky there.
But it's been resolved?
All I know is there's containment and a contamination in there. How much it is? They weren't able to tell us. But it's, it's, it's a DEQ and they, they're the ones literally uh paying these people to come up with the monitoring wells there. Because if it moves off-site, then 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 we have to worry about, is it gonna move towards our water source or not, so.
Can you just let us know if you're gonna do that?
What's that?
Can you let us know if you're gonna do that?
I will, yep.
I think it was Matt and Chad Wing Oil in the nineteen sixties.
Well, the other thing, they didn't know that there was a gas station across the street to the south.
DX, Jack Martin, nineteen sixty.
Miller, Miller's had that, but prior to that, but I said, those tanks have been taken out, so do you know for a fact that
Matt built it.
The contamination in Cubby's area did come from there? The answer is no, they don't know.
Don't know?
No, but, yeah, it'd be good to have have a a little test result so we can say, yes, it's it's contained and we don't think it's moving. They only went down like twenty-five or thirty foot, so those, that contaminant has a tendency to flow, which is good because our water wells are deeper than that, you know, we talk a hundred and thirty-five, hundred and fifty foot deep. So it should float and stay away from us.
You didn't find any on Joel, on Joel Justice's property there that are still mobile?
They never, they never uh looked at that at all.
Okay. Jim, you can keep on talking. Yeah.
I'll try to.
What else to work with?
I'm sure. So, just video packet there, sales packs um for August. Good number again, twenty-three thousand, two-thirty-six. Monthly average is not quite twenty-two thousand dollars a month. We've got this month, September, to round that out with some positive numbers. If we got to pick up that twenty-two thousand, that'd be great, but it's about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars for the year. Been a pretty good year for sales packs. Uh, I did put a lot of information in your packet about legislative bills. Uh, we had a Zoom meeting late last month and went through about three hours of legislation, a net uh free pages, that stuff that we covered with a lot of different toppings in there. There is some concern and uh we're gonna see some type of constraints on our budget at some point in time for cities, counties, schools, everybody, but uh it is not there yet, but uh there's a lot of uh leftover bills from last year that that's gonna come up and uh we'll just have to see how how things go with that. Then right behind that, I put out that special single edition and sent it to pass the largest water funding bill in history.
Yes.
That is uh all good information. Could it impact us? Yes. I don't know when and and how it could. What what we're hearing from the state is in this new bill and and legislation that there's more funding available for uh communities and water infrastructure improvements, wells, mains, towers, that type of stuff. And it could have a better benefit for us. Right now, we've got a SRF loan from the state, zero percent interest with a twenty percent free give. That is still good, that is still valid. The issue will be is if uh this comes up and is available, would it be as good, better, or the same? Don't know. Uh, all I can say is we have to wait and uh see what they tell us about it and if there's an opportunity to uh to get a better deal, then we'll see what we can do.
Jim, that would uh, like if you're you're running sewer and wanting a new apartment, proposed apartment? But that type would not be involved in this, but yeah, if you bought ground and did an expansion, that possibly be eligible for funds from the?
They're telling us it could still apply to our our new water treatment plant, but we don't know what the language is about it.
Okay.
Maybe it will, it'll be a better package for us and uh we can get a a little better deal.
When, when does Craig come back to?
Uh, end of September.
From this next?
Yeah, if you look to the to the next page there, he gave us a summary of work completed in August and anticipated progress uh for September. And then uh to answer your question, uh meeting with the city for sixty percent progress review on Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. So the meeting will uh, we can update the building, the grounds, the layout, uh get some feedback on that particular stuff, so. Four PM on the twenty-ninth is is the schedule of meeting for that.
I have another question about the the funding, the water funding thing, Yip, that's do we have lead service lines?
Good, good.
Well, that's something that Mike worked on after we wrote.
Well, we, here's, here's what the issue is. You don't know if you have a lead service line until you cover you know, an old house like uh Mike could have an old lead service line to or in feeding the thing, so.
Wouldn't.
Any house that's probably fifty, sixty years old, I would guess could have a lead service line.
So nineteen seventies probably is about the time in last?
Well, I think I think somewhere before that fall, it was probably the sixties when they started to uh decide, hey, we got lead service and we needed to get them out of uh, out of service, so. Yeah, that's something to look at. Uh, I don't know. There's, there's some communities that had a a abundance of that stuff uh and probably still in use, but I don't know if that that would fit us or not, to be honest, so. Any other questions?
Have we heard anything about the levy statement yet?
No, no, I've uh constantly asked those people, I said, our fiscal year is ending, is there any chance that we can have that? Autumn number in order to clean this thing up before we go into the new budget. And uh, personally I talked to says, doesn't look that way, but we're always trying to be hopeful for them to finish that thing up and give us some numbers that hopefully will be good numbers for us, so. Yeah, I'd like to clean that thing up and finish it uh in this budget year. It doesn't sound that way. We have to, we have to wait and see what they they end up, the federal government moves green, so.
On some things.
On most things.
Any other questions for Jim? No?
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep, just to give you a heads up, I'm going to be taking some vacation on the eighteenth through twenty-eight.
Good for you.
Okay.
Well deserved. Now we're down to the amendment for Big Rivers. That's what we've been working on, I think, Wade in Wakefield and and uh, is it? What do you think, Tony, on the Northeast Power? They're trying to get the point of, I don't know, you can explain that to me, Jim.
Right, well, we're trying to get that done and and that's part of that amendment uh that is in your packet that they'd like to have updated. Uh, got this from them them today, uh meaning this is the city of Wayne met last night. They met the first and the third Tuesday. They will meet again uh I think on the twenty-first or something like that. Uh, but they asked for language to be specifically exchanged in there. Uh, it sounds like uh company may only offer capacity or energy at a rate index to another rate and with a discount of more than ten percent off of NPBD's general station. And on all, in all bases, the SPP served by company as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one and with no incentivizing uh an existing customer to increase the load, so. City of Wayne asked to have that language put in there and uh I guess if you feel comfortable, you could uh vote to authorize the mayor to sign it when we get that document cleaned up. That just again came in today, otherwise we could have could approve that, but if you want to wait for that language to be put in that amendment, then um we could approve the mayor to sign that document and and that comes to us probably. we could, uh, approve the mayor to sign that document and, and, uh, that comes to us probably next week.
Who's, is it Northeast Power or Wayne, uh, or Wakefield that's, that's having this document made or...
It's coming from, it's coming from Big Rivers.
That's their, their lawyers who said that.
Correct.
And Wayne wants to change to ten percent, no more than ten percent of the Nebraska public power.
Right, they wanted that language when I just read, uh, put in there or revised in there so it could be, uh, a little bit cleaner than what they were looking at.
Their council approved that?
They did, they said they're gonna do it the following Tuesday, uh, when they meet again. Northeast Public Power voted unanimously to approve this amendment. Wayne came up, Wes sent me an email this morning, and then this came from Big Rivers and said, this is what Wayne wants, we're okay with it, and we'll put it in there and then...
They're okay with it?
Big Rivers is okay with it.
Well, I think if she said, I think we did, put that, if we can't... We can make a difference, change your...
I don't have the final document, I have the original one and which they're proposing to insert this language.
Yeah.
And there's a section of the existing contract, it's three point one five.
Yep.
The original amendment said stripe that section and then it's entitled. But now Wayne has suggested this language, instead of striking that, or changing the language of this.
Correct.
Um, I haven't, so I don't have a document that does that. So if you wanna wait until you get it, are we meeting in September?
Well, it'd be a while before we meet, but I guess...
You won't meet till October now.
I guess we can have a special meeting if we had to.
That's up to you guys.
So I don't know if we're gonna change with Wayne approving Northeast Public Power's language in there, which is same, same thing right there, that they approve it already?
Northeast has, Wayne will revisit it after their next council meeting, I'm assuming they will approve it. And then we'll have, uh, a document sometime between now and then.
So if you want to have a motion to approve amendment number four with this revised language in section three point one five, I think you could do that.
authorize the mayor to sign it when it comes in.
Now, if it changes, other changes, then we have to come back.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I don't understand the concept. The concept when it was given to us, uh, I think Lowell and who is the guy at Northeast Power that have been driving forces?
Mark.
Mark Sholz?
Mark Sholz.
Sholz. They had this idea and it sounded good, the power, the power generated in Kentucky, it's, it's cheaper to send that power this way than it is for them to send it to the highly populated areas. And because the transmission lines now are owned by the public, they're no longer owned by the power companies. I mean, they can be used by everyone if they go online to move electricity. But we were supposed to be saving, you know, up to three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars a year by using Big Rivers. And they, we had a big meeting at the fire hall, I, they, Lee, you were there and Jim was there. Will, were you there, Larry? And I gotta, and then I, they, they explained it when I left, I had, my head was just, and I had no idea what we were talking about, but everybody agreed it was gonna be a good deal and was for two years. We saved about six hundred thousand in two years of that. But then we got hit with that million dollars last year during the cold snap and with the weather behaving the way it's behaving lately, it just scares me that we could have exactly the same occurrence here a couple, a few months, and then I don't know what we can do. And so this would give me a little peace of mind if we would approve the, no more than ten percent above Ne- Nebraska public power because Nebraska's public power being rates are rates at that time, didn't they, Jim?
No, no, I think they, uh, they had the luxury of making money because they had generation capacity at that time.
Their capacity allows them to actually sell it at that high rate. So I think it would be, you know, and is it gonna encourage them to just go ahead and bill us all the time ten percent above Nebraska public power? I don't know, but ten percent is a lot better than what they charged us last, uh, February. That's just my opinion. And if you ask me if I understand that document, at least it would be, if we could do it, I don't understand it really. But I know ten percent above N P D would probably be a lot better than what happened this spring.
It gives us a little protection.
A lot more than what we had a year ago. You've worked with them, Zach, what do you think?
No comment.
That's kind of what Wes said, same, same thing, uh, yeah.
I think when we had that cold spell, they were having to purchase electricity somewhere outside of their, or it says index to another rate, you know? Um, and that, you know, was through the ceiling, that's why we got hit with that big bill. So by adopting this, you're gonna, if they have to do that same thing again, buy from out somewhere else, it's gonna limit, limit the rate that they will charge us, but that's a good deal, better than what's existed.
So if, if you say we can do this, we would, if you guys don't have any other questions, we could make a motion and at least pass when we have no more than ten percent above N P Ds.
Can I get a picture?
Sense the cap, I just can't believe they're doing it here.
I can sleep a lot better if they kept it.
I mean, they're willing to change the distribution point or whatever, yeah? In the first place, which I don't really understand why, you know, they'd do that either, but, but they are willing to do that, which would avoid some of that too. So they're making moves, I don't know if that means they want to keep us as a customer?
Well, it sounds like they understand our problem and, yeah, huge problem.
So if you want to do that, I would say there'd be a motion to approve amendment four as amended, as suggested.
Approve amendment four as amended. If you guys wanna do that, somebody can make a motion.
Make a motion to approve amendment four, approve the three five twenty, second three one one five.
She would, that's good.
Second.
Well, you seconded it. Larry?
Hi.
Ross? Well, it's Scott. Thank you. We're getting weird at the end. I just find my right cheek. Oh, here it is. The question came up about Brad's property. I, I talked to Julie, uh, a week ago, sat with a layman officer and had a good visit with her and thank her for her work with, with us. Uh, she's spent a lot of time coming to meetings and giving us advice. And I talked to Jim, and I don't know if I talked to anyone else, but they, maybe I talked, I don't know, if I talked to council over, I tried to talk to some other people, maybe I talked to Larry about... Brad, Jim, you, you had, you were there when he moved out?
Correct.
And you stated that you offered him the amount that we offered him?
Offered to, uh, have him sign the contract.
Well, what was his response?
Said he wasn't, wasn't interested at the time, right now he was wanting to get moved and, and, and do that, so.
And that was like the fourteenth, the fifteenth was the deadline.
Right.
Basically, the offer expired, you know?
And we, we kind of felt like we should still, uh, be good faith partners and offering that amount of money and hopefully he would take it and use it for rent so that he could have a decent place to stay for at least a, a few, uh, months or years. But I don't know how the council feels about it.
My comments are this, right now, the property's been determined to be unsafe and he's had his appeal, you know, it's been denied. So the building needs to be torn down, uh, because it's unsafe.
I understand that.
So, uh, is he going to do that? Say, say he doesn't sign the purchase agreement, isn't interested, it's his responsibility to bring that, they'll take that building down. He's probably not going to do that, in which case the city now is in a position to do it and assess the cost back against the property. So then you'll have a lien on it if he continues to own it. And then you can, down the road, you can foreclose on that lien and end up with it anyway, but, um, the other thing is, like, what's on the agenda is, should we extend the, the offer to him? My suggestion would be, um, you know, if you're still gonna offering nineteen thousand, but change the purchase agreement to whatever the cost is of taking that building down, that that would be taken from the, deducted from the purchase offer that we're making. Or Jim suggests we do a percentage of it or something, you know, one, charge a half of it or something.
Well, we've torn a lot of buildings down, I, I, I feel like the council may have to decide and talk to Brad, uh, the nineteen thousand to help him and also, because he paid twenty thousand for that building. And I think one of his remarks was he kinda felt like he got a bad deal and he bought it for twenty thousand. But I think we were trying to, to, first of all, the best case scenario that we were hoping for that weekend, if you all remember, was that, that Brad voluntarily, uh, leave and find a healthier place to live. And I, and my feelings is a good faith, we need to offer him the nineteen thousand and I hope he takes it and then look to the building down, that's how I feel.
Is he gonna deed the property over to us, cause he's still...
He would have to to get the nineteen thousand, yes. But, you know, he probably was really emotional that day. And I had tried to talk to people that talked to him, you talked to him, did you, Jim?
He was called me a couple times and said, hey, I wanna talk to the attorney and you together. And I said, well, we wanna buy your building, and he said, fine, and, uh, that was early last week, and he said, I wanna call and talk to you, and I said, you can.
Is he still waiting?
Yes.
Well, I, I think, my opinion, this is just my opinion, that we should offer him the nineteen thousand and try to set a meeting whether he feels comfortable, Jim, leaving, or any of you or somebody else, and, you know, here's a check for nineteen thousand, can you sign this for us, or can you leave your check? That's how I feel.
I think that's the right way to handle it too. I don't like us going in and just taking over the property, demoing it and then charging him off of the funding. I, it'll be our, a bite for us, but I do think it's still the right thing to do.
Can we put another deadline on it though? You have to put...
I think you have to put a deadline on it, Scott, I'd say thirty days, but I, but we need to make a real effort to get in touch with him.
And then say at the end of that thirty days, then what's gonna happen is we're gonna tear it down and we will deduct that amount of money from the sale that you would have received. You know, so then offer him the nineteen first and then say thirty days, if you can't make up your mind in thirty days, we're gonna deal with the property, cause it shouldn't be sitting there, I understand that. But, and, and then, then he would have to, uh, assess with funding. So maybe that would get him to move, right?
Okay. And maybe we could involve some of his friends in the conversation also. And Brad's a man of principle, I don't think, I think, you know, I think if he was being prudent, he would take the nineteen thousand, but I think he's kind of a proud guy and I think he just thinks that that's, he, that he, at that time at least, he didn't wanna take the money. And Jim knows him better than most of us, like he's had a lot of conversations with him.
Correct.
But I think if we give him, and I don't even know if we need a deadline of thirty days, but I, I would hope, the problem we have with the thirty days is making sure that we can fight him and converse. So I don't know if...
You can go to the November meeting or something.
Well, go to the November meeting, and then if we can't get it done, we're gonna have to do something, I suppose.
But, but at that time, then, you know, we need to end that, if it's not, right?
Yeah, I, I think if we go good in sixty days. Well, as Cuzell, what did he say, Joe? The, the thought was that...
Yeah, Aaron was, was, uh, you know, he came over and helped Brad move, so he, he's been, he's been a good ally for us to do that. So I would try to get a hold of him first and let him know, you know, what our offer is and see if that's, uh, workable.
So if I understand the general consensus is just basically extend the offer to them under the same terms, vote at the deadline of November, whatever, November.
That's our council meeting?
Yep.
And if you need, if, if we can't get in touch with him, uh, I know we're gonna have to make, we're gonna have to get in touch with him and get in touch with people that he trusts and our friends and this, see if we can persuade. It's possible the council wants to do.
So make him the offer nineteen with the option that he deeds it over to us?
Yes.
Right, oh, absolutely.
And there's nothing behind him neither on that building, is there? No other people?
He can't.
No other liens on it?
No. He can't re-enter and try to get his stuff out, right? Because it is...
He could.
Well, he, he, there's gonna be some stuff he wants out of there, so it's just gonna have to be a, a controlled situation, but...
He, um, Jim pulled the meter, so there's no utilities at all. And I don't know, has the council seen the report?
No.
Back?
No.
Here's the condition, when we did the inspection warrant...
He gotta look at it.
Jim took pictures and then, here's this person in Olson.
He's a civil engineer from Olson's, they had to come out and evaluate the building and his, uh, last statement in his report was, uh, demo the building, it's just impractical to repair it, uh, the difference in being fixed and replaced. He just said the best thing to do was to take it down and demo it because of, the costs were, it wasn't a good...
Can you just back up Jim's, you know, give us some more?
Yeah, I know it's, I don't, I, I, I understand, I, I think we did the right thing and I think this motion is the right thing to do and I hope that he takes the, takes the help.
Yeah, will we, uh, extend the purchase agreement to Brad Rehrman with the, for nineteen thousand dollars for his property at the deadline of November tenth?
Thank you, Bill. Val?
Hi.
Music's on.
I put on a second.
Hi.
Hi, Larry, Ross?
Hi.
Val?
Hi.
And then considerations for the demolishing that, Billy, do we have to wait until we get that purchase order?
I'll get a, I'll get a, uh, couple bids on the demo of it and see what we got, what we're up against to.
So we really don't need to, I think we all agree.
As long as that's the direction you're going to go.
But we'll, we'll converse with Brad before we?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And I think that's what we wanna do. Here's the, the big thing for now, I guess, is actually on the, kind of the plans for next year, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year budget.
Need a motion to approve that?
Yeah.
Make a motion that we get to approve our, uh, financial year budget, uh, four thou- four hundred and forty-five, six, I don't...
Four three.
Four forty-five, six oh three, four hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and three. Which, which we're really approving in this motion is the, the budget, all the budget to set out. So ask, ask, what's number twenty on this nineteen?
So we're approving this that you guys all worked hard to put together for it? I think we just need, I don't think we need to read the amount right now, just the, that's the kind of... So number nineteen is actually on the budget, can we get a motion to approve, Larry?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, financial year budget, twenty-one, twenty-two.
All right.
Second.
Val?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Ross? And then we've got, uh, passage of the resolution, which actually, uh, tells the final tax request, which is, there for my glasses, but it's a little bit lower, right? Told about it, like Larry said, four hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-five, six hundred and three, forty, four hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and three dollars. Four hundred and forty five thousand, six hundred and three dollars. End of, perfect. And then this is actually... Where does it say? It's declined by point, zero point seven percent. The after everybody does the new Wakefield. And there's a lot of other information, but I'm sure people would be interested in that.
Do we have to introduce that?
Yeah, move for that.
Okay, I'll move to introduce the resolution eleven, twenty twenty one. And pass, second final tax request, four hundred and forty five thousand, six hundred and three dollars.
Second. That, okay, good. Ross?
Aye.
Scott? Larry? There you go. I mean, that's it. And the last thing is the approval of one percent increase in restricted funds. And you had a good explanation of that, Kyle. So that was, at least that, just take a motion. Just a motion?
Yep.
One percent increase in restricted funds.
Second.
Okay, we're gonna go backwards. Scott?
Aye.
Belle?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Larry? And before we adjourn, I'd just like to say that, really appreciate all the help we got on the budget and understanding and really want to thank Zach because he was up at night doing a lot of work. He was there for our budget meetings and coming right to work, go back to work with us. Appreciate it a lot, Zach. Thank you.
And don't quit. Tell Pam I was watching you.
No pressure.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Larry?
Aye.
Ross?
Belle?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all for appearing tonight.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, clear for us.
It's gonna take a little bit, give me a little bit of a mortgage.
Zach, where you going?